Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to invite up Dr. Riley to do a short presentation on the partnership and grant we've received from Quest Diagnostics for $97,350. Dr. Riley, if you don't mind.
Good evening, everybody. So as Superintendent Bergeron said, we have some really exciting news. And this really started with the mayor's office. So thank you, Mayor Vigent. Uh, thank you, MEDC, and I'll invite Meredith Harris up here in just a few minutes. And so as Superintendent Bergeron said, Quest Diagnostics has donated $97,350 to Marlboro High School. And whoever's running the slideshow can go to the next slide, and I'll give you the details. So this is going to support up to 300 students with online SAT and AP prep coursework. It's also going to pay for the cost of their exams at the conclusion of that coursework. The program is set to run for two full years, and we thank Quest Diagnostics for making that adjustment. We just launched this about two weeks ago with families and students. We already have 60 students enrolled for this spring. And so also carry over into next year, where we're looking forward to being able to start this, really, in the fall for students, uh, to begin that trajectory towards a successful SAT experience. As I mentioned, it covers the cost of the exam at the conclusion of the prep coursework. And we're also going to measure the effectiveness of this with some milestones that look at enrollment, achievement, and post-secondary prep outcomes. And so without further ado, I want to welcome up a couple guests of honor tonight. First, we have Dr. Karthik Kupasami from Quest Diagnostics, and he is the Vice President and General Manager of the North Region. And I also want to invite up Meredith Harris from the MEDC, and she is the Executive Director of MEDC here in Marlboro. So without further ado, Dr. Kupasami and Meredith, will you join me?
First, thank you, Dr. Riley, School Committee, um, for inviting us from Quest Diagnostics to be here. Uh, my colleagues Stephen Farina, Pauline Branley, and Kristen Parsons, also from Quest Diagnostics, are represented here. You know, first, we are really proud to actually say Marlboro is the home for Quest Diagnostics. You know, two years ago, March 18th, I think both of you remember that, um, we actually, when the entire world was looking for COVID-19 testing, we were one of the first labs in the world to actually have COVID-19 testing up and running. And we have done tens of millions of COVID-19 testing in the New England community uh, over the last couple of years, okay? But more importantly, we are in healthcare, um, as you know. Every day in our facility in Marlboro, we take care of 40,000 patients testing every day. And that's, and we are a three-shift operation within the Marlboro community as well. I'm standing here representing over 2,500 employees who are Quest Diagnostics employees in the New England area. As you know, Quest had an initiative called Quest for Health Equity. It's driven by a Quest Healthcare Foundation. And we really wanted to address disparities and barriers that communities face specifically in, with respect to healthcare. And that was the focus of Quest for Health Equity. But we also know there is something called social determinants of health, and specifically, education equity is as important as healthcare equity. So, um, on behalf of that Quest for Health Equity initiative, you know, we are delighted to present, um, you know, today to Marlboro Public School, you know, $97,000, a little over $97,000, uh, to support AP courses, to support SAT, to support tutoring, as well as to support even writing the exams itself. We really think educated students, this provides a really important gateway into the world, into the reality of what they can do in the colleges and beyond. We know it's, uh, you know, it's going to be useful for more than, or up to 300 families and students, so they can have better quality of life as they grow up and take care of their families as well. And we also want to put this, you know, this is not an ice bucket challenge or something, but we would like to say that there are many companies in the, in Marlboro, in the town of Marlboro, um, that Mayor and Meredith Harris, um, you know, as part of MEDC, have organized very successfully, that other companies would have an opportunity to contribute to the community that we, that we actually work at, um, not only mission like this, but also other kinds of missions that are available, okay? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Meredith to say a few words.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Karthik. Just want to say thank you to Quest and, you know, thank you for your, your willingness to be innovative with us. You know, when you originally came to us, it was talking about something different, health equity, and it's really impressive to see companies like yours being willing to, to think outside the box and get involved with us on, on a different level. So thank you very much. And, um, it's going to be a huge difference for a lot of students. And it is the ice bucket challenge. We'll say that here now. Hopefully, all the other companies will follow suit. So thank you so much, and appreciate you guys being here tonight.
Very welcome. So I would, I would like to invite, um, Mayor, Principal Riley, and the school committee. So we would like to present this check, and also invite my Quest team to join us, okay?
So we're going, we're going to go right through them?
Sorry.
We're calling, are you sure?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Dear friends of ours.
He works third shift.
He started working there a number of years ago, so you're half third shift. He started working there a number of years ago, so you're half third shift. Oh, why don't work in there?
I'll make sure.
His name is Jordan.
I'll meet him tomorrow night. Will leave here tomorrow night.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to let everyone know, uh, we obviously have a great relationship with Quest Diagnostics. Uh, they took a huge part of the old digital HB building. Um, been through the facility several times, and the automation in there is unbelievable. Um, and they step up to the plate every time we ask them, and they are a big part of our MEDC, and, uh, can't thank them enough. And like Karthik said, um, we'll start with this as the challenge for the other community members. So again, thank you to Quest. Uh, Student Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to invite the Student Advisory Committee up to the podium to update the school committee on various activities at Marlboro High School, um, in no particular order, but Adam, I'm seeing you right here, so you're going to be the first one.
Yeah, I think I'm usually the first one. Yeah, well, first off, um, well, as many of you know, I'm Adam Hossain. I'm the Senior Class President and Student Advisory Representative. Uh, but first off, I'm just really blown away by what, what just happened with Quest Diagnostics. That would have been amazing to have last year while prepping for the SATs. I'll just get right into it. So when I first came to MHS, I was surprised to discover that Student Council and Class Office were two separate activities. Tonight, I'd like to present an argument for why I think combining them and in turn unifying student leadership might be a good idea. But before I discuss the advantages, let me give you an idea of what that might look like. The way I envisioned it, it would be like a, a large general school business meeting with, a leadership meeting with class officers and advisors from each grade in attendance. This is a period where general school business could be discussed, and a representative from each class could give a brief description of what the class is working on. Also, a time for brainstorming where we can seek help and advice for, for ideas and other events, whether you're a senior class, junior class, freshman class, whatever. And freshman class representatives, sophomores, junior and senior class officers would all work together to manage school-wide events. Then I think each class could branch off into smaller sections where they discuss individual class business more thoroughly, like we do now. First off, I think this could help a great deal with communication and coordination. A lot of the time, class representatives might have no idea what's going on in other classes, and this can lead to different scheduling conflicts when it comes to activities, and a lack of clarity on other classes' roles in a class's activity. Sorry, I'm saying classes a lot. Hope, hope you can follow. Um, this would also allow younger officers to learn and seek the help from more experienced upperclassmen. And this can be particularly useful in things like fundraisers or advice on dealing with criticism, because for a lot of people, this is the first time they'll be in a big position, and you have lots of feedback, both positive and negative, coming in from your class and other faculty sometimes. Additionally, this would give underclassmen interested in pursuing leadership opportunities in the future a more comprehensive understanding of the role of student leadership and how it varies with respect to each grade. This would also allow for a better utilization of school resources, because one extremely useful resource to have is an advisor with extensive experience. Uh, I know our class advisor, Ms. Ryder, for instance, she's been working on these activities for many, many years, and it's been really helpful to just be able to ask her questions like, how much is prom supposed to cost? Or how have certain events run in the past, and how can we adapt that now? Having all advisors together in one meeting would allow other classes to take advantage of assets like this and gain a better understanding of how we do things at MHS, which, especially at a time when, where we haven't had a normal school year in a while, I think would be pretty helpful. In addition, classes could share extra supplies or decorations that they aren't using and to save money and prevent the need for other classes to go out and buy the same things. So it's just less waste overall. And event participation, by having all hands on deck, classes can run events with each other more easily and more frequently, as well as help garner interest and support from their respective peers and other classes, to other class events. This would in turn improve the big problem that every class faces, how to get people to show up to your events, like student participation is a big thing when it comes to leadership. And this is especially important in more critical events like fundraisers, where we're looking to raise money for the big events that everybody gets excited about at the end of the year. This would also help lighten the load on students in terms of the number of regular meetings they'd have to attend and the general time commitment needed for these opportunities. Uh, while these positions should absolutely be a priority for those who choose to pursue them, most people have other important obligations like work, family, athletics, and not to mention schoolwork. These positions can, can sometimes be very difficult, if not impossible, for people like these and student athletes to participate in. By reducing the time commitment required in order to be a part of leadership, we can open up these opportunities to a much larger pool of students and in turn promote more diversity, both in background and experience for student leadership. Lastly, I would also like to quickly mention that the class of 2022 will be running a car wash fundraiser this Saturday morning from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Naveen Hockey Rink, right next to the high school, at $10 per wash. So please stop by if you can and spread the word. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my presentation. I hope you all have a good night. And if you have any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
No problem.
Who's next? Come on, everyone's being shy tonight.
Okay. Um, hi, my name is Jessica Rosenzweig, and I am the Junior SAC Representative, as well as the Class President of 2023. Today, I wanted to give an update on how the junior class is continuing to plan prom and how it is coming together. Coming into this year as a new class officer has been exciting, as well as challenging at times. And there have been many new things to navigate. As class officers, our biggest goal this year is to plan and host junior prom. At first, we were planning to have it at a venue and have it catered, like junior prom has traditionally been done. However, in February, we realized this would not be possible, and we would have to change our overall plan. The class officers and advisors came to this conclusion with lots of careful consideration. With the majority of our time in school spent in quarantine, fundraising has been, has been made even more difficult than it normally would be. And it resulted in the majority of it being left to this year. We were concerned we would not have enough money to host prom, keep tickets affordable, and ensure we would make a profit for next year. In combination with this, we were also worried about whether we were able to count on having it at our intended venue, the Manor in West Boylston. At the time we made this decision, at the time we made this decision, COVID guidelines were changing constantly, and the Omicron variant made the future of our prom very unsure. It made it difficult to continue planning prom based on unknowns and rationalizing spending money on deposits we wouldn't necessarily be able to get back. Nonetheless, we were still determined to have some sort of event. It could just no longer be at the Manor. We decided to move it to Marlboro High, the Marlboro High School Gym. We were still offering food. It would just not be a sit-down meal. It will be more like a finger food buffet style situation. And we also thought it'd be cool to have the Trombetta's Ice Cream Truck to come for dessert. We also have a DJ, and as, and as of right now, the class officers, advisors, and representatives are working to figure out which decorations we want, as well as how to decorate the gym. I also want to make sure that I acknowledge the people who are helping the junior class greatly to make our prom become a reality. Thank you to Principal Riley for coordinating with us, offering the gym, and help us cater prom. Thank you to Mr. Travers for supervising our Panther Prom Meetings, as well as providing lots of helpful information. Thank you to the Senior All-Nighter Committee for helping us pay for the DJ, as well as making some decorations. And thank you to everyone else who has been involved in this whole process or, or donated various things to make prom possible. All in all, while many challenges have arisen when planning prom, it is a pleasure to share that it is still something that is able to happen and something that will be a lot of fun. Um, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'll wait till they're all done, then I'll ask.
Who's up?
Good evening. My name is Risha Kandaria, and I am the Class of 24 Representative on the SAC. I am also a three-season athlete running cross-country, indoor track, and outdoor track. So today, I'll be advocating for a new outdoor track facility. The current track facility we have is a little over 20 years old. The proximity of the trees surrounding the track area with the resulting stick and leaf debris has also led to a faster deterioration of the track surface. As the track surface deteriorates, the chance for injury for student athletes increases. So on behalf of student athletes, parents, coaches, and others, I would like to ask for your consideration for a new outdoor track facility. The mayor's office has done an outstanding job renovating other fields within the high school and middle school. These fields are among the best in the area, which are used for various different sporting events. If the decision is made to renovate the track facility, I, along with many others, would love to see how the mayor's office oversees this renovation, given that they take this job on. Our track and field is already unique in the way that there's already a fence surrounding it. One additional thing to consider for an updated track and field facility is to investigate the feasibility of increasing the track to eight lanes all around, like the new Asbit Track. A new track surface, along with removing the surrounding trees to allow for more spectator area, will provide, will provide Marlboro with a first-class facility. This would allow us to hold district and state-level meets. In addition, a new track facility would most likely increase participation. An example of this being surrounding schools whose new state-of-the-art facilities have brought in more track and field athletes. I hope that these reasons are taken into consideration, as it is long overdue that we get a new track. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening. And any questions?
Any for question? Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Risha. I appreciate that. Um, just out of curiosity, what's the minimum amount of lanes that we need to have? Um, do you know, for actually hosting some of the events?
I believe six, I'm pretty sure. I think that's what we have right now.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
The reason you, the reason you want eight lanes is so you could run, as Risha actually pointed out very clearly, district and state-level MIAA events. Without that, you cannot run those events or be considered.
Exactly. And I, and that's why I wanted to establish what our minimum was, because I think currently with the, um, facility that's at Whitcomb, we only have five lanes, and it's too small for actually having something right there.
Can't run state track meetings at Whitcomb.
Exactly. So I, you know, just, I think for community knowledge, just to understand what we have and, you know, what we would need to get to.
Yeah, we have six lanes all around, I believe, with eight lanes for a straightaway.
In the high, at the high school?
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate the request.
Any other questions? And what'd you, what'd you say about the mayor's office at the beginning?
All of this, uh, new fields are beautifully done, like well-done.
Well, because of that, I'm going to look into it tomorrow. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your season, Risha. You've done a wonderful job. She's not just a runner, she's an excellent runner. Been reading about how well she's been doing.
Who's next?
Um, hi, I'm Sarah Garner, and I am the freshman representative on the Student Advisory Committee. With choosing classes and class elections coming up very soon, the freshman class is trying to find ways to get our peers more involved. The class advisors and myself have noticed how little the freshman class has participated in school spirit and fundraisers. I am one of the two freshman representatives and one of the very few freshmen in student council. At the beginning of the year, my class had a tour of the school and a club fair to gain interest in all the clubs available. With many of my peers excited at the club fair, very few actually followed through with the clubs that caught their attention. I have talked to representatives from other class and after, other classes, and after hearing that they had similar struggles, they said that the majority of the people who attend the meetings for their class get there through word of mouth. Myself and other freshman, and the other freshman representative have had a few people come to us with questions of how to participate, and we hope that their initiative will lead to the class of 2025 having a diverse group of voices in all of our decision-making. To help with word of mouth for future years, our class has been, our school has been finding ways to get the incoming freshmen prepared and excited for the high school. There have been more mentorships and tours around the school throughout the year, and we are planning to set up tables to present different ways to be a part of the school to the eighth graders. The goal of this is to have different relatable people for the eighth graders to talk to, so that they might want to join some of the activities as that person, the same activities as that person. Hopefully, with these efforts, we will see a much larger freshman involvement than we did this year. Any question?
Question from the committee? Any questions? Spoiler agenda.
Thank you. So it's not just directed at Sarah, it's actually going back to Adam, and I'm sorry. I was just processing everything you said. It was so much. It was amazing. Um, I'm just curious, um, have you presented, Adam, what your, what you presented to us, to your peers? I mean, is this something that is?
So I haven't, like, we have, we don't really have hours.
Do you want to come back? Thank you.
I don't know that we've really had the opportunity to, like, as class representatives, talk to the whole student body. Um, well, this is actually, doing that would give us that opportunity a little bit better. But I have definitely brought this up since last year. And, uh, student council, I've brought it up in class meetings before. Ms. Klein right there can attest to that. I think for a long time, I thought this would be the, the best way we can move forward with student leadership, and that, that could help solve problems like the one Sarah's facing. Uh, because when you have this big group of people, more, maybe more energetic upperclassmen who have been here, who know what they're doing, that can probably help attract, uh, more underclassmen who might be interested in that and really give them an idea, because when you're just a class representative as a freshman, you're kind of isolated with other freshmen. And I think even some of the, uh, faculty advisors are pretty new as well, so they don't have, um, as thorough an idea of, of how we do things at MHS like, oops, sorry, like Ms. Ryder or our other advisor, Ms. Crockwell, does.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, Sarah, you, you guys are figuring it out now, and then you're going to go up the food chain, and the incoming people aren't going to know what to do. But if you had this kind of way of sharing and mentoring the younger students and that sort of thing.
Because I would have loved that as well.
Sounds great to me. So is that something that you, like, how do you make this happen if, you know, the rest of your peers want it to happen? Do you?
We, uh, we, we talked a little bit about this, uh, just yesterday with the Student Leadership Committee, and I think one of the things that we do is, is when students are considering positions of leadership, that we tie that to participation in STUCO. But as Adam had suggested, that we try not to create two different meetings that are then required of those students as student leaders, that the two groups kind of merge. And Mrs. Klein, Ms. Klein had brought this up as well a few weeks ago, and it said, this is an idea worth exploring. So we're going to look at merging the leadership groups, and if that's feasible at MHS, and having their responsibilities be a little bit more merged in terms of their meeting times as well.
Could I mention something else?
Please.
Sorry, I've been up here a lot. Um, I think also what, what this does is because when you think of class leadership, what gets students the most excited is running for class president or running for vice president, or like the big positions that aren't available to students until they're juniors and seniors. And at that point, you have to already have done certain things in your underclassman years to qualify for those positions, which is already something students complain that, like, they weren't aware that they had to be a part of student council, or that they had to be, uh, a student rep, things like that. I think doing this, having that culture of, we have this whole student body leadership, um, senior class president would be the student body president, and like the senior class would probably take the lead, as well as take a lot of feedback and information and help from the other classes, so we could open up positions as early as sophomore year for really ambitious sophomores. Uh, but make freshman year a, a big learning experience so that people who don't know how leadership works can go in, attend these big meetings, and learn what happens when you're a class officer from, from when you're a sophomore to when you're a senior. And when you're senior, of course, the events get much more important, and you have a lot more people, like, a lot more eyes on you, seeing how you run, how you handle all the criticism, how you deal with all of the, the management of the activities that have to happen for a successful senior year. Now, does that answer your question?
So I, which, I love the idea of working with each other and mentoring. I would also say my hope would be that it, it expands a little bit, though, because there are so many different opportunities, whether it's strictly here at MHS or the opportunities, you know, that some students take within the state representation on a student level, too. And, and I think if that could be combined, but not meaning, um, lessen the amount of people involved, but have something where it is better representation across, um, I think it makes a lot of sense, because the communication will, you know, frankly, be better, and you probably will have more opportunities of, um, more effective conversations of making either effective change on a statewide level, regional level, as well as then individually, then within MHS. Um, and I think it, it does seem like sometimes it's not always as in sync. Um, and only some people hear about it and, and do get involved. And, and the idea is really thoughtful on, on trying to bring more opportunity, but, you know, allowing people to, um, experience it, that leadership role, but also not be hampered by music involvement or athletic involvement, which, um, frankly, let's be realistic, that's often where you do have some people that want to experience all of these different things.
Yeah.
And then something gets cut out because of a time constraint here or there. You know, let's, let's give the opportunity where we can, um, make it available to everybody.
Yeah, I think another big thing is like familial obligations are definitely real, especially at our high school. And a lot of students do work after school, so it can be difficult. You have all these different activities, you have already your homework, and of course, you do need time to sleep and relax. So I, I think doing that, it does lessen the burden. Um, and also, oh, actually, lost my train of thought. There was something I wanted to say about that.
Wait till you get to my age.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because currently, I just want to talk about what it's like right now. Currently, we are Currently, we are trying our best and like Dr. Riley mentioned, there is in, I think it has to, we have some sort of protocol or something in place where a representative from every class should be attending student council, but that can be difficult because of everything they have going on. Like, right now, for me especially, I have to choose, am I going to student council or am I gonna do my class obligations? And of course, I'm gonna choose the class obligations because I'm, like, that comes first. But it doesn't have to and that's what I want to make clear about this. Like, if we can let people do both. And the big thing is, a lot of the time, these class presidents, these faculty advisors, they graduate, they retire, they move on and the only way these traditions and like expectations for activities get passed down is through that older upperclassman or through that faculty advisor who's been there so long that they understand from A to Z, this is what you need to do to plan a successful prom. This is, these are places that are good for fundraising, that people will go to and that will give us a decent percentage. So, starting people early and giving people the opportunity to start early, I think is really important because you're gonna just learn more and more. And eventually, you have maybe more than two or three people running for the same position, which I think is better than it is now. I feel like a lot of the time, it's the same few people and you end up sometimes even looking for more people to run for a certain position versus having an excess of people who really want to leave their mark on MHS and show what they're all about.
Adam, it's great and it also kind of speaks to what Jess was speaking about having some of the issues that you were experiencing with the junior class. And, you know, I hear what you're saying and a frustration around the fundraising situation, you know, due to COVID. But if you had that support network, things could have been different, right? And so now it's how do you learn from it to move forward in a really cohesive and forward-thinking way? That's great to hear about, like, different groups that are out there ready to help, you know? The senior all-nighter group, there are, you know, parents ready to help, but it's.
It's on heroes.
Right, it's all of that networking and Adam, I think it's a great concept and I think it would help all of the different classes and the students that are involved in different aspects that may not have been able to consider leadership opportunities because they have, you know, some other obligation, whether it's a work obligation. What have we learned? We just talked about this, you know, with Mary the other day, is what have we learned as a benefit through COVID? Use Zoom when it's appropriate.
Absolutely.
Have people LinkedIn in ways so that we can get them together. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. And it's funny that you mentioned that about the prom because we ran into the exact same situation last year where it was like, do we try our best, and we were fully prepared to do so, do we try our best to adapt to the different COVID rulings as they happen? Because they were very spotty and you never knew it was gonna happen the next week. Or do we just, like, put prom aside and focus on making senior prom a lot better? And I think that we have done that this year and that came from our class. Like, that wasn't just a decision that we ended up making. But when it comes to big decisions like these, I always think it's more important to have the whole class vote so you end up with a majority ruling. That way, when it comes down to it, it's no single individual's fault. It's the whole class wanted this or like a big portion of the class wanted this. So nobody's there to blame and everybody's just moving forward in a productive and positive way.
Nice democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Riley.
Graduation. So I just wanted to give a brief overview of what we're doing this year with respect to graduation and I can summarize it. Mr. Diaz, are you running the slideshow? You can go to the second slide. So we are looking at Noble Field again, an outdoor event. We really started planning for this a couple months back. And a couple months ago, we weren't sure where we would be now or in June. So we said, let's start planning the outdoor event just to be safe and know that we're gonna have an event that mirrors what we want. But if you could go to the next slide, Mr. Diaz, thank you. So, to best summarize this, three years ago, we had 11 ceremonies. Last year, we had two ceremonies. This year, we're gonna have one ceremony. So we've been getting back to that one ceremony. I've spoken with student leadership about this. I think that we are all in agreement with the plan. One ceremony at Noble Field, Sunday, June 5th. We're going to schedule graduation a little earlier than we have traditionally when we've done one event in the field house. We've typically done it at 2:00 PM because it's an outdoor event and if there's any inclement weather and we need to postpone, we can look at a postponement later into the afternoon. Still have graduation the same day. So we're gonna schedule it for 11:00 AM. Single ceremony, students can bring up to four guests each. Full graduation agenda. So we are working with our student leaders to build out a full graduation agenda that reflects what they're looking for as a class, the class of 2022. That would include our student speeches, our honored guest speeches. So we're going back to music performances as well. So all that will be included in the ceremony. And of course, we're gonna continue with the free photography plan that we've had for the last two years. I feel like we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from students and families that they're able to go online and get those fantastic pictures of their graduates crossing the stage and of their graduates at the midfield mark at Noble. On the next slide, this is an overview of senior events during what we coin as graduation week. And you can take a look at that. It's been pretty similar to what we did last year. A senior breakfast on Tuesday, May 31 after the long weekend. And then all, going into Wednesday, June 1 is when we begin our graduation rehearsals. So we have two days of graduation rehearsals, Wednesday and Thursday. And then Friday, we start the prom activities on Friday night, followed by the all-nighter activities once again at Wayside, who has signed on to provide our seniors with another all-nighter experience. And a big thank you to Jackie Plank and the members of the senior all-nighter committee for spearheading that again and bringing that back as an opportunity for our seniors. So with that, are there any questions?
Questions from the committee. Any question, Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. I'm just curious, do you have any vision as to whether there might be an opportunity for a live stream since we're talking about four, only four guests that would be able to attend? And I know that's asking a lot from a production standpoint, so I don't ask that really flippantly, but I just.
We can look into it. I don't want to promise anything right to second, but we can look into it. It's been successful in the past.
And I know that's a huge undertaking, but I know with, you know, the number of four, which is understandable just because of the venue, it might be a great idea if possible. So.
I imagine Mrs. Moran is gonna be very excited to utilize, really, you know, we talk about what we've learned during COVID. We learned how to livestream graduation pretty well during COVID. So, I'm sure that she'd be willing to work with us to put those skills to use and look at the capacity and see if we can make it happen. It might be something we partner with WMCT TV as well. Because they've started to take over some of those activities and they've done a good job. So, it might be a partnership we do with them as well.
Yeah, and I say that really saying, I recognize it is a huge thing to have to take on. So I don't say that really lightly, like, let's just put it on livestream. I mean, I get it. So, but thank you.
Similar requests from our student leaders too. With the limitation of four tickets, that if we could livestream it, it would be fantastic for their additional family members. Yep, family overseas, yeah.
Any other questions?
11 o'clock is firm?
Yes. Too early?
I have to leave 6:00 in the morning. I'm gonna be in New Jersey.
She doesn't get up on Sundays before 11?
No, 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 no. I was planning to leave and come straight there for 2, not for 11.
My apologies.
Thank you very much. Mr. Superintendent.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have attached the COVID information for both the city and the schools for the school committee to review. I don't have any further comments other than the last time I had checked in and done a report, we had zero cases on the 9th, we had one case on the 16th. And the guys of today, we are at six, but I'd have to recheck my numbers, but we're around that number. So, it has remained low. For my second item, I would actually like to invite Ms. Jane Haley up to the podium to read the results of the BPA State Leadership Conference. So if you don't mind, please come on up and I'd like to recognize the students.
Yes. So we had 12 students that attended the Hybrid State Leadership Conference and those students were Sarah Cronin, Fenola McCarthy, Courtney Sweeney, Aubrey Tener, Meg Carroll, Josh Irons, Tony Santiago, Mallory Farrell, Rachel DiDonato and then also Matthew Gogan attended as well. And of the 11 students that attended, 21 awards were garnished. So that's a really big deal. They worked so hard on this. And we had a state merit scholar, we had a winner of the writing contest, community service. We swept the whole state for the things that we managed to fit in during the pandemic. We, in accounting, we swept in fundamental accounting and payroll accounting. We had a second place in banking and finance. Our economics team took first place, interview skills first place, ethics and professionalism first place. So we had a lot of winners and they just worked so hard with this.
Mr. Mayor, while we have Ms. Haley up at the podium, I would like to ask if the committee would consider suspending the rules to deal with the Agenda Item 9A, which is the Business Professionals of America Out of State Trip.
Sumoed.
Thank you.
The committee has seconded to bring up Item 9A. All those in favor, pose carries.
And we're looking to, again, have a field trip. The leadership conference was held from February 28th to March 6th. The written tests were proctored by Ms. Haley at the high school. The award ceremony was held online. So what we're looking for now is the National Leadership Conference, which will be held in Dallas, Texas.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And the school committee would need to approve this trip since it is out of state. So we are in front of you tonight to ask for that approval. And I don't know if there's any questions for Ms. Haley.
Questions from the committee. Ms. Boenhead.
Just, I'm just curious, so only half of the students wanted to go or?
The reason why some of the students aren't going is because they have five AP tests that week and they don't want to retake them two weeks later. So. Unfortunately, that's the exact timing, most of the trips, but the following two years, they're gonna be the last week of April when I'm gonna ask to go away. So, that shouldn't be a problem. That is the reason why only half are gonna go.
How is the trip funded?
Completely by fundraising activities such as us creating the football program and selling football programs. So, that's in other endeavors that we do, bake sales, things like that. And that's not enough money. So, a lot of the students pay for themselves.
Okay. And so, so this is for five students, six students? I forgot.
Five students, two chaperones.
Two chaperones. Is the other chaperone Dottie?
No.
Who's Dottie?
That's.
Admin Support Research Project individual, it says Dottie, but it says Haley on the other one, so I assume that was the other chaperone.
The other, it's another business teacher at Marlboro High School, Eileen McDonald would be the other chaperone.
Thank you.
Any other questions? CNN, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, pose carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and congratulations to all the students. Like, amazing job.
Thank you.
For my third item, I just wanted to mention that the school calendar for next year, we had two slight adjustments from the last draft calendar I presented. It was due to us being able to review the MCAS schedule for the following year and then adjust our half-days as appropriate to make sure we're not running into any conflicts. And for my fourth item, I'd like to invite up Mr. Verdon, Mr. Rosenthal to the podium if they wouldn't mind talking about this exciting partnership with Foxborough High.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. Nice to see you. Very quickly, I want to thank Superintendent Bergeron for the opportunity to share great news on behalf of the music department. And I asked Mr. Verdon to join me because I wanted to take a moment to recognize, not only, of course, we're proud of our students, but Mr. Verdon deserves the credit for this opportunity. He deserves the credit for all the wonderful experience that our students are receiving in our high school wind ensemble, in our jazz ensemble. He devoted February vacation, came in every day on his own time. He cultivated relationships with area jazz musicians to work with our students and thus the partnership with Foxborough in this opportunity. So I wanted to thank Mr. Verdon for what he does for Marlboro Public Schools and I'll let him share our good news.
Hi, folks. I'm not used to using a microphone as my voice carries, so I apologize if it comes across a little too loud. So as Mr. Rosenthal said, during February vacation, it's tradition to bring in some clinicians to work with our jazz students in preparation for our MAJE District Festival. This year, we brought in Aaron Bush from the Foxborough Public Schools to work with our saxophone section and then following in the sectionals, he worked with our full ensemble. Foxborough High School is a terrific school for the arts as well as the music program. And each year, Foxborough High School submits tapes for the Essentially Ellington Festival, which takes place in, at Lincoln Center in New York City. The Jazz at Lincoln Center puts on this festival and invites the top 15 jazz ensembles who submit tapes from North America to come take part in this festival. Foxborough has been very successful with the Essentially Ellington Festival in years past and as well this year, they were selected as one of the 15 finalists. With that, they get to go down to New York, they get to have master classes with the musicians with Jazz at Lincoln Center. They get to perform, compete, and if they're one of the top three schools as they were in 2019, they get to open the concert for the Jazz at Lincoln Center Orchestra, which is a pretty awesome thing for those musicians. One of the other really cool things is with the 15 finalist schools throughout the country and Canada, Jazz at Lincoln Center will send a member of the Jazz at Lincoln Center Orchestra out to work with each of the finalist schools. And this is something I've known about. This is a really great opportunity for them. What I did not know about is each one of these finalist schools gets to pair up with another school district and have that musician come and work with that district. So a couple days after Aaron came and worked with our jazz ensemble, he gave me a call and said he was selecting Marlboro High School for this terrific opportunity. So, on Tuesday, April 5th, from 10:30 to 12, we will be very fortunate and honored to have Jazz at Lincoln Center drummer Jerome Jennings joining us to work specifically with our students. He is also the director of the Juilliard Jazz Orchestra. And if you're not familiar with Juilliard, it's probably the top performing arts school in the world. So we are getting a tremendous world-class clinician to come work with our students. The students are unbelievably excited. And some of them did not understand the magnitude as to what they are getting. And so I had someone, I was like, it'd be as if a member of the New England Patriots came and worked with our football team. And this is just a tremendous opportunity for them and it's all because of their hard work and their dedication to what we're doing. When the pandemic hit in March of 2020, we were just on the brink of going to our MAJE State Festival. And then with last year with the protocols in place, we didn't have performing ensembles. So we started pretty much fresh this year with most of the band being, with members who have never played jazz before. Some of them, the last time they were ever in an ensemble was in 7th grade. And the fact that we are performing at a high level right now, we just earned a high silver medal at our district festival with an invitation for our state festival, which is happening this Saturday at Norwood High School, 10:30. Feel free to jump on the bus if you want to save on that gas, the gas prices right now. So, we are very much excited to have Jerome Jennings joining us to work specifically with our kids. We have just wonderful things happening in our music department this year. And with that, I would like to invite all of you to attend the workshop so you can see that the work that the students are doing and this wonderful opportunity that they are getting. These kids have worked very hard. We have 11 of our 17 members performing solos this Saturday at the state festival. We have three of our students selected as outstanding musicians at our district festival, Fenola McCarthy, Natasha Ramsey, and Kobe Almeida. So we are just. So we are just very excited for the wonderful things that continue to happen and the support that the school committee and the district administration gives to the music department. So I have little invitations for all of you, so that you can put them on your refrigerators, much like you would for the wedding invitations that you get in the mail. You don't need to RSVP, but we'd like to see you there. We're going to make this a celebration of our students and their hard work. We'd love to see all you there, the administration there. We're going to invite some of our music faculty as well. We're in the process of working out with the middle school administration to see if we can get our middle school jazz ensemble students to come and watch this as a way to get them excited about what we are going to be doing in the future years. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I did watch a meeting of you fine folks a few weeks ago where Jill Morin was here and saying that you guys wanted me to come in and do a bucket drumming thing. So unfortunately, I did not bring my buckets today, but feel free to book me, reach out to Mr. Rosenthal, who is my agent, and we'll make this possible. Any questions?
That was my question.
Yes, spread it out. So I have to give you a shout out, only because I am a proud parent of a jazz student who, I'm going to say probably a couple of years ago, really would have been one of those completely clueless, wouldn't really get it about how important it was. And as a parent, hearing this kid come in, you know, after they had learned about this opportunity, and she was ecstatic. And I will say, to me, I appreciate that because you have made that happen. That enthusiasm is because of all you do. And you, but the whole program, because she walked in with interest in music and jazz a couple of years ago, and she is all in now. And it's because of what you guys have done. You've helped breed that enthusiasm, and I'm not saying that she's going to go play the trombone for the remainder of her life, but it's given her a lot. And I guess I want, I want people to hear that, because just like you got all excited about, you know, she's talking about her middle school students, it's the enthusiasm that helps to really build, and it builds so much more than just here. You know, it's a passion of having this little nugget that then kind of blooms, and you've really done an amazing job with it. It's exciting that these kids that really didn't have much of an opportunity to do much playing over the last, you know, couple of years with COVID, to then go to districts, do well, you know, decently, and then to move on to states, and it's huge. So thank you.
Thank you.
We're just really excited to see what the students are doing and to honor them and to see them grow, not just our jazz ensemble students, all of our students who are involved in all of our musical electives as well. Wait till I send you an email to come check out our rock concert with our four chord projects going on with our Learn to Jam class, it's going to blow your way.
And I will then have to follow up, for those that have not seen any of the clinicians ever work with the students, we got a taste, my husband and I actually attended the districts, and it was really, really interesting. I really have to say, I just thought it was just incredible to hear, you know, interaction, what was said, good and bad, the whole thing. It was just really interesting. So I would encourage you all to attend, if not, you know, on Saturday, some other time, because it's really cool.
And on that, I just, I'm very proud of our students for whenever they have someone other than me in front of them, they're very receptive to new ideas. And I say it like this, now being a parent, you can tell your kid till you're blue in the face to brush their teeth, you bring someone else in and say, hey, you got to brush your teeth. Did you hear what that guy said? He told me to brush my teeth. So we're very excited for the wonderful things that are continuing to happen in our department.
Thanks.
Great, I'm going to come around and give you all an invitation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Verdon.
Thank you. I'm going to leave one right here for the mayor.
Oh, it had to be a drummer, right?
Well, you know, well, see, now, I'm going to tell them that...
Now you get the superintendent. Can we just get a, let's...
Well, see, I was going to do it at the microphone. I'll do it, I'll do it on the way out, I'll do it on the way out.
I get one too, thank you.
I could do that, I'm a little winded from chasing my two-year-old today, but you're going to, you give this up?
I was going to say, this is for Jill, ready?
All right. So thank you all for having me tonight, and let's go! Thank you. I won't believe it.
This is for Jill.
Here you go. I'm invited. Yeah, you're invited. All right, thank you.
That's the last item from my report. And again, just want to thank Quest Diagnostics for their incredible generosity. Thank you.
Oh, I'm in charge.
Thank you. Tonight, I am looking to give the school committee an update on the COVID-at-home opt-in. As of tonight, March 22nd, there are 498 staff, which is an increase of 32 since my report from last month, and 1,297 students, which is an increase of about 110 students from last month as well, who have opted into the at-home state, the at-home testing option. At-home test kits continue to be distributed, and given the large supply that we do have on hand, secondary schools, Wickham and the High School, have been able to start sending home more than one box to be able to cut down on the amount of time spent delivering to students during the school day, just given the number of enrollment at those two schools versus the elementaries. The elementary schools will continue to do the bi-weekly plan of sending home a box once every other week with the two kids. We do have some additional boxes on hands, I was just talking to Superintendent Bergeron before the school committee meeting, would be looking to send down to the registration center extra additional at-home tests to be able to distribute out to families who are enrolling, and then also reach out to the Boys and Girls Club to be able to have those for families to access there as well. Secondly, I wanted to give a report on Marlboro Public Schools Student Support Team, which is the acronym SST. As part of our monthly meetings with Unit B administrators, Assistant Superintendent Mary Murphy and I led discussions last week about student support team procedures that occur at each school. A student support team is a formalized process where a teacher can refer a student that they have a concern about and be provided with support and consultation from the school-based team to develop an intervention plan. And I included an attachment with a flow chart on a basic overview of that process. Prior to the meeting, Unit B administrators reviewed the current district SST forms and procedures to be able to compare to current practices within their schools. At the meeting, each school shared how SST is implemented in their school, including how many students are referred, how the referrals are processed, what staff attend as part of the SST team, and then what interventions are typically recommended. As part of this, as part of the discussions, administrators from each school learned about specific procedures that others were implementing and are looking forward to developing in their schools. There will be follow-up work with the administrators on the SST process to develop consistency and continuity across the district. This work is connected to our Strategies for Improvement 2.2, which is supporting at-risk students through a comprehensive set of intervention systems. Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? Questions from the committee? Thank you very much. We're going to do the public hearing now for the budget, and we'll take this in the regular stages, people speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the school committee. Anyone speaking in favor of the budget? Is there anyone speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in favor? I close that part of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? I close that part of the public hearing. Anyone speaking in opposition? Anyone speaking in opposition? Anyone speaking in opposition? I close that part of the public hearing. Any questions from the committee members? Questions from the committee members? Any questions from the committee members? I close that section, the entire public hearing, and we'll be dealing with that later. Program of studies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite up Dr. Riley to discuss the yearly changes to the program of studies.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to go through some of the larger components that have changed within the program of studies. I gave you a document that has a list of the edits by section, and I'll obviously take questions at the end. Let me begin with our early college program, the fourth section of the program. So we are looking to add three additional early college courses into our program of studies. First-year experience, which is, focuses on really the social transition into college and a lot of the things that come with that, setting students up for success from not just an academic standpoint, but also a social standpoint, which, as part of my own personal research, my doctorate, is just as equally important as being academically ready for college, being socially ready for college. In addition to that, we're looking at two courses in our mathematics department for college credit, topics in mathematics and statistics. Moving through to the early childhood program, something that I am really excited about in partnership with the ECC and Quinn Sigam and Community College, and so we are looking to begin, or I should say, expand upon a program that we've had in place now for a couple of years, where our seniors have been working with teachers and students in the ECC. We want to build this out as an actual curriculum experience in early childhood, and we want to combine it with two early college courses specific to early childhood degree attainment. And so a big thank you to Director Andy Barnaby and his collaboration on this proposal as part of our program of studies. I know that many of the students who are currently working in that area are very excited about the potential for this during their senior year. Moving into the next section, another area that I'm really excited about is the expansion of a partnership with the Branches Assisted Living Center, right up the road from Marlboro High School. And so we have met several times with the staff from the Branches, and we've talked about different work-based learning opportunities that can be presented to our students during the school day, and also that extending into employment opportunity at the Branches. And so a thank you again to our partners at Branches and all the work and time that they've dedicated to developing out this partnership. A big thank you to Amanda Shanier, who is our Work-Based Learning Career Specialist, who put a lot of time and effort into developing the proposal that's here before you tonight. And so we are looking at this Personal Care Assistant Certification that would come through this joint curriculum work that the students would do onsite at the Branches, and again, this could extend into after-school employment opportunities as well. Moving to the Science and Technology Engineering Section, one thing I want to highlight there is the evolution of a course that we started last year, and we have now brought it to full fruition as a residential construction and carpentry certification course. And so this opportunity provides students with a year-long course that ends in a carpentry certification. Again, we have this wonderful woodshop and woodworking technology at Marlboro High School, and we've been able to take it and enhance our program of studies, and so that proposal is before you tonight as well. Lastly, the part that I want to point out for Business and Information Technology is the inclusion of three additional certification courses in the area of Microsoft Office, and we have worked with our new business instructor, who was mentioned earlier as one of the chaperones for the BPA National Trip, Eileen McDonald, and also John Travers collaborated with the Microsoft Office certification experts in order to build out certifications in Word, Excel, and PowerPoint, and that leads to an overarching Microsoft Office Specialist Certification if students are able to achieve all three of those courses and the exams that they culminate in. So that's very exciting news. I feel like with this program of studies that we've presented to you, we have really taken work-based learning to a new level at Marlboro High School, and we're going to continue with that growth. This is just the start, but as we come out of this pandemic state and what that has done with schooling, and we're getting back to a sense of normalcy, it's wonderful to have these potential opportunities on the horizon. So with that, I'll turn it back to the committee for any questions.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Bowden-Henderson?
Not really a question, but I am beyond thrilled, because this is, you know, this is what we're all about in Marlboro, and to be able to give kids the opportunity to leave the district with college courses and certifications and expertise that will allow them to, you know, enter the workforce or give them a leg up when they do continue their education is amazing. It's great, I'm thrilled. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Can you explain the rationale behind dropping the Art Foundations class? I have my own reason for believing that it probably should be dropped, but I want to hear what the rationale was from Julian, from...
I think Mrs. Baker, and to speak for her, because we have had many conversations about this, with that as a prerequisite entry level into all of the different variation of art courses, it is kind of, it was a hindrance for students to really get started on their trajectory, so removing it just opened up the whole playing field across the Visual Arts and Textiles Department for what students can take immediately coming into Marlboro High School as opposed to having to go through the gateway of Art Foundations first before they then access all of those other courses.
Agreed. I'm just, the only, the only question I have regarding it is, if you've got kids that maybe aren't seeing themselves in a long-term art trajectory, they just want a basic art class.
Yep.
They'll still be able to take a painting class or a drawing class.
Absolutely.
Or whatever, but it just won't be the full experience of all the different types of art that they got in the foundations class.
Yes, it'd be more specific within the area that they're able to take, and they won't require the Art Foundations to get into that either, so if they want to go into, for example, Photography 1, they won't need Art Foundations in order to do so, they can go directly into Photography.
Yeah, it makes sense. Latin as Bridge?
So that course actually hasn't run in multiple years, so we kind of put it on the bench. There's still interest in offering it if we can build it into the program specifically for our Ls. What happened was because we filled that program with so much, not just English language development opportunities, but also opportunities across other content areas, electives, so it hasn't run in a few years, so we just decided to put it on the bench.
Okay. And the Library Research Skills?
Yep. So Ms. Van Catamaran, our new librarian, has tried to offer that course, tried to get it off the ground, it just hasn't been successful, again, amidst all the competition that's out there for electives. She hasn't been successful in getting a cohort of students to take that for a semester. So what she's, what she wants to focus on is that Makerspace opportunity that she built in, that course, and really try to expand upon the enrollment in that. And she's also done a fantastic job coordinating with teachers across content areas, more so than I've seen in the past, with the LMC specialists working side by side with teachers of different contents to expose students to research skills through those opportunities, where she actually takes the classes on for multiple days in the LMC and teaches them those skills. So I think she just felt she didn't need a whole semesterized course to accomplish that, and it builds her capacity to across content.
Yeah, and you know, she, putting on my MEF hat, she has applied for and gotten multiple grants over the last few years to embellish, you know, all the Makerspace. I mean, we bought a whole bunch of stuff and machinery for the Makerspace, as well as some great content.
Absolutely.
Books and online books that, you know, can be shared out throughout the district as well.
Absolutely.
So she's doing an amazing job up there, and it seems almost like by her taking on the classes that she's able to teach those research skills to more kids than offering just the class. just the class, so.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Tennessee.
So, the library one was one that I was wondering about as well. But I like the idea of it being infused into other areas because that is a skill set that you kind of need to know, but you may not need to really take a whole semester-long course on it, as long as it can be infused elsewhere. That sounds great. I have to say, relative to those business courses with the Microsoft, that's awesome. That's a great semester course to be able to offer. And when we challenged you to continue to try and offer more semester courses, this is a great piece to be added in there, which is fantastic. Now, one thing that I did pick up on, and I just was curious, where you decided to remove and merge the ninth and 10th grade teams.
Yep.
And I'm just curious about, you know, about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we're looking at what the next evolution of the teams might be at Marlborough High School. And coming into this particular year, based on student feedback, we opened up, we had this conversation last year, program of studies, but we opened up the elective options for students coming into ninth grade. And so, in doing so, students with particular teams don't necessarily find themselves being a STEM student anymore, specifically involved in only STEM electives, or a business student anymore. There's a lot of crossover between the teams. So, we're looking at what that might mean for the rebranding of the teaming model at Marlborough High School, and perhaps moving away from specific content-based teams that become something that is branded by the students and the teachers going into next year as part of the project-based learning experience.
Okay. I guess I'll wrap my head around it in a whole different way now.
So, not as heavy, not as heavy content-driven. So, still honoring the spirit of the small learning communities with the personalization and the engagement, but you don't have to be a STEM student, or a business student, or a fine art student. You can be a team student that's celebrated and participates in project-based learning that crosses all areas of content at Marlborough High School.
So, it's essentially moving forward what's happening at the middle school, where you're just on team, whatever the color is. Or, I mean, so it's more team-based, but you're like, I don't know, middle school.
Not those little mini academies anymore. It's more just teaming.
Well, the elective piece, I think, again, based upon the student feedback that we received when we had the content-based project learning experience, was students wanted the opportunity to experience multiple things.
Yeah.
Students that were invested in entrepreneurship skills also wanted to get robotics skills. And so, when we were very content-based with the teams, the feedback from the students was that we were perhaps locking them out of opportunities that they wanted to be a part of.
Yeah.
And in turn, their investment in project-based learning was affected because they wanted to expand upon that as well. So, yeah, we're kind of going with the student feedback here and trying to create a more well-rounded experience for them. I think we took the first initial steps with that this year, when we opened up electives across content areas for the incoming freshmen. They had more choice than they have had in many, many years. And so, we're going to continue moving forward with that. And they're still going to get the benefits of the small learning communities. It's one of the strengths that we provide as a high school, that many high schools, they simply don't offer. We are able to offer that, and that's a strength for our students. They get the support of the village, right? I've often said, "It takes a village." So, they still get that support in ninth and 10th grade.
It was you that said that? I always wondered who that was.
I might have taken a little too much credit for myself on that one, but...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One other question, and then I would like to see if Hattie has anything to say about this, but I have a question first. The teaching assistant internships.
Sure. Yep.
I mean, I know one student that's doing that. How many students do we have involved in that?
So, this year, and I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I would say we have over 10 students that are going to other schools to participate in that program. And actually, Patty Brown, who's here with us tonight, helped spearhead this two school years ago, when it started during the, well, last year, rather, when it started during the COVID pandemic. And it was really an opportunity for schools to think creatively about how to better staff their schools, but from the perspective of students who want to learn about becoming professional educators and be involved in the schooling process, especially for the younger students in school districts across the state. There was so much positive experience and feedback from that, that we decided, since we're already taking those steps towards work-based learning and career-based learning, and Patty and the leadership team has often talked about creating a pipeline that allows us to train our students to become our future teachers for here in the Marlborough community. So, it's our first step at really formalizing that and giving the students credit to be a part of that. So, it's generated by all the excitement that they've had the last two years being involved in the other schools, and now hopefully too, at the high school.
And they get paid, too.
That's, that would be through the state initiative, yes.
I mean, it's amazing. This one student that I know, she's a senior, she's going to college to be a gym teacher, and she came home after like the first week of doing this and said to her mom, "I have totally made the right choice."
Right.
Like, she goes to the Good Now School, and she works with a gym teacher and is like beyond excited to start college and become a teacher.
Yep.
It's amazing.
Absolutely.
Really great. Really great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Can we hear from Hattie?
Do you have anything to add to?
There's been a lot of student-centered talk tonight.
Yes. So, concerning the student committee presentations, I think I really liked how Adam's idea of unity tied into what we were hearing from both Sarah Garner and Jessica. I think that is a great idea going forward. I wish that I could have had, we could have had more experience with that as I was an underclassman, but I think if we can help get that situated and set up for the years coming, that's going to be really successful. Hearing about all these courses and internships, if it's one thing that MHS does well, it's give its students opportunities. There are just so many opportunities for students to succeed. You know, us having internships like this, not only to receive credit, you know, credits, but also to be paid for it, is just wonderful. I know which student you're referring to, who really enjoyed her internship, and that's just going to set our students up so successfully to enjoy their careers and, you know, start it young, start it in high school, just so that however we want to continue on in our careers later in life will be successful. And I'm also excited to see the BPA students go to Texas. I have many friends, and I'm a part of the BPA club, and so I'm very glad that they're so successful and they're able to continue that at the national level, as well as the Jazz Department. Again, many students who are part of the Jazz Department, and it's so nice to see, after coming off of COVID, see students, you know, just having that passion and seeing their passion, you know, like being rewarded with these opportunities. It's just fantastic, and I'm so proud of Marlborough as a student, even things that I'm not a part of, just seeing us thrive and be successful in so many different areas is wonderful.
Thanks. Yay.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the committee?
Oh, move to approve the program of studies.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As required by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, prior to June 1st, 2022, the school committee must vote as to whether or not the district will accept school choice students in the upcoming 2022-2023 school year. Status is that currently Marlborough Public Schools does not accept students through school choice. The recommendation, while it says that the recommendation is to take a vote, I will say the recommendation from the superintendent is not to open school choice, as we are over 5,000 students. So, sorry. I don't think school choice would be in our best interests in the near future.
What's the pleasure?
Move to not adopt school choice until Richard School gets bigger.
Motion accepted superintendent's recommendation. Any further discussion? Tennessee.
Just to help reemphasize, I mean, when we, we've been looking at the numbers, I mean, we've been growing massively, and I can't, I'm not going to remember it off the top of my head, but I know it was like almost 100. I mean, the students we've taken in just recently.
From October 1st to February 1st, with the district enrollment grew by 6%, which is equal to 290 students.
Okay.
Since then, we have continued to take in students. We are now over 5,000 students, which to recorded history is our largest enrollment number that I can find.
Right. So, I think, just so we're putting it out there to remind the community, it's not saying we want to close our doors. It's just that we have to be realistic about making sure that we're servicing as quality as we can with the students that are here within the district. And maybe someday that will change, but for right now, we got to keep our chickens in the roost and make sure we're doing the best for them. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The FY23 school calendar is now in front of the school committee for action. There were two changes that I did make to the draft calendar for March and May for the early release dates. The reasons for those two changes were due to the MCAS schedule coming out the same day as the last time we met. So, Ms. Murphy definitely pulled me aside and said, "It's finally here. Let's take a look at it." And we quickly moved those dates, so they wouldn't interfere with the MCAS for next year. So, my request is that the school committee approve the FY23 school calendar as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some budget transfer requests for the committee's consideration tonight. At the ECC, requesting a transfer of $2,200 from the BT line to offset overages in the PARA line relative to a new hire, and transferring $200 between the two ECC supplies accounts. At Good Now, requesting a transfer of $2,500 from the PARA line to offset the cost of a long-term substitute teacher. At JARIC, requesting a transfer of $8,000 from the EL teacher line to offset costs of a long-term substitute and overages relative to after-school programs. We're going to see a couple of after-school accounts over tonight. The transportation difficulties that we've had this year has caused some additional demand for staffing after school because of buses being late or having to loop around. At the Richard School, requesting a transfer of $4,000 from the custodian line to offset overages due to a long-term substitute. At Whitcomb, requesting a transfer of $28,000 from the clerical line to offset costs relative to a long-term sub, an ELA teacher hire, and costs for after-school activity support. At Marlborough High, requesting a transfer of $9,700 from the general supply line to offset an overage in the special education and business instructional materials line, and utilizing the after-school line to offset overages for the NIESK accreditation that's happening soon. District-wide, requesting a transfer of $25,700 from the translation line to support overages in the HR contractor services line, overages in the medical supply lines. We recently placed an order for $20,000 to replace all the AEDs in the district. That actually happened today. Overages in the district-wide supply lines, this is to support some moving pains that we've had since we moved the central offices to Whitcomb. We had to purchase some new chairs to outfit a new training room, and that also includes the chairs for the school committee room, also an overage in the caseworker line. Lastly, in district-wide special education accounts, requesting a transfer of $85,500 from the private day account to offset overages in public day and collaborative tuition and assessment costs. Happy to answer any questions on these.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none. Mr. Tennessee.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the perspective relative to some of the additional expenditures that were necessary to support the after-school programming, because, you know, we have to understand that it, due to some of the transportation, you know, delays, if you will, and issues, that we've had to adapt and be flexible, and then utilize our time as wisely as possible. So, I just, that was not something that you could have budgeted ahead and known the complications that we were going to run into. But I thank you for the time of explaining that earlier, and I think that helps to explain it to the committee. So, thank you.
What's the pleasure?
Move to approve the transfers.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Mayor, the next action item is for the school committee to deem obsolete some school furniture. In FY21, we utilized end-of-year funds to invest in new student ceiling. The new furniture is scheduled to arrive this summer, and before we can install it, we have to remove the existing furniture from where it is. We are exploring multiple remover options, including donations, selling them, or paying to remove them as waste. The vote is for the school committee to deem what exists today as student ceiling, and I provided the list, obsolete, so that we can start that process as soon as possible.
Do we have, I'm sorry to put this way, but do we have a waste disposal line item in the budget, or where would that money come from?
We don't. This, if there is a cost associated with this, it will be supported from end-of-year funds. And I don't want to be too hasty in saying this, but it is looking fairly good right now. We had a lead from Ms. Hennessy, from an organization that potentially would take everything for free. That's looking good. But again, we have also received quotes from removal companies that were upwards of $100,000 if we have to pay for it. So, we're hoping to avoid that.
Have we used the auction, the state auction site in the past?
We have. We did a test bid recently for 100 chairs. It sold for a buck, for $1.
It's cheaper than paying someone.
Exactly. So, we're exploring that as well.
All right. I mean, there's a lot of things on there for a bucket that one is.
Right.
Really bad stuff on there.
And our stuff is not bad.
No, I know that. That's why I'm surprised. I think we can get rid of it all and not pay for it, so.
I was looking on the list myself.
What's the pleasure?
Move to approve the recommendation to deem these overage furniture as obsolete.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we have closed the public hearing, the budget, I am looking for a vote on our FY23 budget. The full amount is $69,479,713. It is an increase of 4.24% over the FY22 budget. And tonight is a night where we traditionally have voted it, so that way we can send it to the mayor by April 1st.
What's the pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget at the 4.24% increase over the '22 budget, which would be $69,479,713.
Motion made and seconded to approve, $69,479,713. Any further discussion?
Is it a good sign or a bad sign? You had it memorized and didn't have to look down at it.
Numbers I can memorize.
He's the numbers guy.
Spelling, not so much, but... Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Acceptance of gifts and donations. Special Olympics, Massachusetts, MHS Unified Sports, $500.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Mass DSC, FY22, FC. Mass DSC FY '22 FC 467 Early Child Expansion Grant to MHS, or Early College Expansion Grant, going to MHS, $59,000.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Reports of committees. Mrs. Ryan.
As the Chair of the Superintendent's Search Committee, I'd like to report on where we are in the process. The committee consists of seven members. The mayor had to withdraw due to scheduling conflicts. To fill the vacant spot, I contacted the other four school committee members. Two members do not have the availability. Out of the remaining two that did have the availability, one was randomly selected, and that was Catherine Hennessy. So the seven members of the committee are myself, Dan Caruso, Catherine Hennessy. Also on the committee is Angela House, Whitcomb Principal, Eileen Barry, MA President and Elementary School Teacher, Brendan St. George, MHS Teacher, and Ayako Barnum as the parent representative. The committee received 23 applicants for the superintendent position. We have decided to interview nine candidates. We have conducted five interviews to date, and we plan to interview four more candidates. The goal is to bring forward the final candidates to the full school committee on, at the April 12 school committee meeting. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miss Hennessy.
Thank you very much. So Policy had a meeting on March 17th, celebration of St. Patty's Day. What else do you do, right? Policy meeting. So we have a number of policies that will be moving forward for first reads, removals, things like that, that will be on the next agenda item, because it was, or next agenda because it was just too close to this meeting. And we've got a few more things that will be coming up, so we got to get another meeting on the docket, but moving right along. Thank you very much.
Any other committees? Members' forum. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I did have a chance to review the warrant, and I will be approving that and signing afterwards, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members' forum. Anyone for Members' forum? Members' forum.
Mr. Mayor, should we say congratulations to the winter sports teams of Marlborough for representing us?
Oh, my gosh. Those hockey teams have been amazing.
They did a wonderful job, so.
Phenomenal job.
So congratulations to other co-op team. And we have a student from MHS who was on the co-op team, and her name is Mallory Farrell. And for the boys, they went to the finals, and unfortunately, they lost in the finals, but they got to play on the garden ice, and that's a lifetime memory. So good for them.
They'll remember it forever.
Are there other sports teams that are, how are the other sports teams?
I believe the seasons are closed. I think we're moving into spring season now. I don't have anything else to update on that.
I'll add, though, because I know that Ava Van Buskirk had done really, really well, like crazy runner, incredibly crazy good. And I believe she secured a spot towards Nationals, right? I was going to say, I thought Nationals, and she participated already in New England, right? Sorry, I'm kind of like looking going, but I mean, like crazy amazing times, and she is a sophomore, so got a few more years on her belt here at MHS. So crazy good athlete. And like you said about Risha, I mean, like, we have some amazing students that, just whether it's music, athletics, leadership qualities, just some amazing, well-rounded students here at Marlborough.
Congratulations to all the winter athletes. We're looking forward to the spring.
Any other members? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Thank you very much.